Go ahead and call the public hearing to order. Uh, this is discussing Colfax County ordinance 2024 dash oh three and ordinance to amend to section four point one of the Colfax County Personnel Policy and Procedures Ordinance 2017 dash oh one. Uh, at this time, is there any public hearing? You're welcome to come up to the podium. There any further public comment on the hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
How's the middle gun?
Okay.
We'll go ahead and call to order the budget workshop. Uh, county manager, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Ty, are you ready to present?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, before you this morning, I have presented to you the preliminary budget for Colfax County for FY twenty four, twenty five. I, on the first page, I have listed every fund uh that is under Colfax's uh umbrella. And the first column is the actual cash balance that comes off the treasures report as of April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. This number will be subject to change once we close the uh, once you close out the year and all the uh AP and other revenues are collected. But this gives a basis of where we stand or a snapshot as of right now. Um. I've had, um, I broke everything down by revenue, salaries, operations, and capital outlay and the transfers needed to bring everything into balance. You will note that there are three large transfers to bring everything to be in balance. On the second page, I have given a breakdown of the uh general fund salaries. This gives you an idea of what is actually for the general fund being devoted to each category. If, one of the things I wanted to note with the increased COLA and the requested salary changes, that about eighty percent of the um general fund is um dedicated to salaries.
I had a quick question. Did Reed, did you? You said you did salary changes. Is that on top of the three? Half percent?
Uh. Yes, sir. When you directed us, we did do the COLA for everyone. And then with the sheriffs, with the uh direction from the commission, we did do the thirteen and half percent for the sheriff's department.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was all that was done as far as the salaries go.
Yes, sir. And that uh, that the share um, from what I can tell so far, that the salaries for the sheriff are included in the general fund and some of the uh law enforcement uh recruit funds down there in two ten or yeah, two ten, two eleven, two twelve, and two thirteen, those salaries are broken up into those also.
Um, sure, Chairman. Uh, manager Gore, uh, what, do you know uh which para plan that um each of our, that our uh staff and our sheriff's office are on? Or Ty, do you know, do you know the para plan that they're on? Are they on plan four, plan five?
Um, I'm not sure at this time. I'm still trying to delve in and uh learn everything I need to know about Colfax County.
Yeah, bring this up, Mr. Chairman.
We can get you that information.
If I can, Mr. Uh, Mr. Ware. Um, the sheriff is on a separate plan, uh, the sheriff's office than the county. And they do um spend more in the para than uh the rest of the county employees.
Suzie can answer that.
Do you know what?
Suzie can answer it.
Yeah, we're on municipal plan two and law enforcement is under four.
Under four, okay.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you, Suzie. Uh, the only reason I say that is if we're covering seventy five percent of para, if they're on plan four, the employees are paying about twenty percent. I don't remember the exact numbers, but the employees are paying about twenty percent on plan four and the bill, and the county is paying about twenty one percent. So if we're paying seventy five percent of twenty percent, I mean, that's going to be in the high thirty percentage that we're going to be covering. And then I know the plan two for the general, the employees are paying around twelve percent and the county is paying around eleven percent. Uh, so when you add those two together, that's going to be in the mid twenties. Yet if you look at the para amount at nine oh seven and you divide that by the salaries, um, I don't know, it just looks low to me. And it's a total of twenty percent. I don't know, maybe that's right because they're so heavily skewed towards. Now, are the, is the detention center, they have a different para plan too, don't they? Or do they underneath the general?
I think they fall under. But I'm not sure.
They're on the same as the rest of the county employees.
They're, they don't have it. There's, isn't there a detention center plan though? Right. Maybe it's not. I don't know. I just, I expected it to be higher than twenty percent.
Sure, Colonel.
Um, one question. Uh, where is the assessor's uh one percent fund showing on this? But this, are the, are the salaries for the one percent fund included in the the salaries on the back on the second page, Ty? As a total for the assessors?
Yes, sir. I'm double checking. I believe, but I don't want to answer you incorrectly, so I was double checking.
Thank you.
But there is a separate plan for detention center employees.
Uh, Commissioner, I do believe um, looking at the uh salary, um, there you go. Um, I do believe they are included in the assessor. Um, we can fix that if you would like it moved somewhere else.
Um, it's not necessary. I don't think, Ty, to break it out. I ju, I was just wanting to make sure that I was looking at it correctly and that it was included in the salaries uh summary.
I am.
And I, you know, I see the, I see the funds.
Yes.
Front, but I was just, just double checking up. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I just have a question on that property one percent fund. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I just have a question on that property one percent fund. So it says three hundred, I, I don't have my paper in front of me, but three hundred and some, and then it goes down to two hundred and eleven thousand. Last year I had two twenty. That fund is very important. I use that fund for appraising, you know, for the appraisers to get certified, um, uh, to go to class, training. Um, I need that to be two twenty, the same as last year, not two eleven. And then on the salaries for the assessors, it seems like that's low, the beginning than what I had before. I don't know. Maybe I was reading it wrong. I just wanted to double check it and make sure it's okay. With a three point five raise. I'd like to see more of that spreadsheet where it shows what you make, each employee makes after the three point five. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Um, can I address that question?
Yes, please.
Um, so this was just the preliminary to get us rolling. And my plan is, once the commission, um, if they're okay with it, approves it, and then we get the preliminary set up to DFA, that I would actually come for a week or so and go through the preliminary with each department head and adjust anything that needs to be adjusted so that when we're ready to submit the final budget, everybody's seen every number.
No, the only challenge with that is the budget.
Any changes we can.
Statutorily, the budget has to be submitted by midnight on June the first, regardless of that date. So in most.
Sir, I know.
In most, uh, due dates for the state, if the due date falls on a Saturday, it moves to the following business day. But since the budget is in.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay. So it has to be turned in by midnight.
I was talking about when we get ready to submit.
She, I, I'm sorry. I, I believe what she was referring. When, when she, um, turned this in as a preliminary, she'll come back, meet with everybody and then make any final adjustments at that time for the final submission. Is that right interpretation?
July submission?
Yeah.
I see.
Yes, sir. That's, that was my plan.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you meant this submission.
Ty, I just had a quick question on the manager's office. It showed salaries of six hundred and sixteen thousand and it just may, I'd be, I might be looking at the wrong salary schedule from prior. But it showed that the, oh, no, never mind.
Uh, but I do have a concern. Um, this has a, a significant declining balance for the general fund, uh, approximately three million dollars. And, uh, these numbers on this report don't reflect reserve requirements, which were over two and a half million. I don't know the exact number. I mean, are we going to use, are you proposing that just the, the money that, um, we have in that, uh, one-twelfth GRT, which is two point seven, is going to be qualified as our total reserve? Um, because it's going to be really close. Because that, that four hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
That has to be added to the general fund to calculate your reserve. And you're showing on here a balance in the general fund of zero dollars at the end of the year. This is, it's like we're spending.
Yes, sir. No, sir. These are things.
Go ahead.
No, sir. Uh, this is just the preliminary. Um, we've had, uh, a short time to prepare it. This is just to get us started. I would, I understand what you're saying, but, and I was just trying to get something to present as far as determining everything that needs to be done. So this is the one of the things I need to sit down with Monty and his staff, and we need to go through it line by line. But for, uh, we had a short turnaround from when I was hired to get this presented to you. And right now, this is what I could come up with, and I understand there several things that need to be addressed.
I guess the question is going to be, can the hold harmless be held as part of the reserve? It doesn't go in, the hold harmless is not calculated as part of the required reserve. They may not allow the funds out of there to be held as part of the reserve, since it's not included in the calculation for the reserve. Uh, but this, looking at this right now, I mean, if we sent this to DFA like this, they would freak. They'd probably reject it. Because the decline.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So to me, it depends on what that reserve is going to be. Again, I know it's in the two and a half million range. I don't know the exact number. But if you, well, what's three twelfths of nine million dollars? That's what it should be. I mean, roughly.
Uh, two point two, two and a half, two point two fifty.
Yeah, so maybe that's it. Maybe we, if, since the, um, the additional one-twelfth is counted as part of the reserve, then we have enough there to, to cover our reserve. But next year we won't. I mean, we're spending three million more dollars than we're bringing in. This is a one-year thing. With this big of a decline, that means next year to get back in line, we're, we'll have to cut headcount. I mean, seriously, with, it's a three million dollar, we're spending three million dollars more roughly than we're bringing in in revenue.
Yes, I feel like the, the salaries are going off of the prior schedule, adding three and a half percent just on the manager's office. It is about sixty thousand more than what I saw. I think they're fluffed up right now.
I don't know. I mean, we'll need to dig into it, but I don't, we didn't raise salaries by three million dollars. It's not just salaries and salaries may be.
No, no, no.
Of this, but the expenditures
are total.
We need to dig in to the detail on the. I don't know.
I'm, Commissioner Hugh, I was, I was looking at the manager's one since you brought it up and I'm confused on that one as well.
My thought was, oh, go ahead.
Um, previous one, we were at six twenty-eight if you added in the grant writer position. So I'm not sure where, um, Ty, if you can help where you got the six sixteen and change from.
Um, I was provided a salary schedule, um, from the manager's office. And I took those numbers off the salary schedule and inputted them into the sheet. So we, we might need to take another look at the, um, the calculations and go from there. I'd have to look at last year's numbers compared to what we did this year. And I could do an analytic for y'all for the next presentation, showing the increase from current year, uh, budgeted next year, proposed next year budget.
Then Commissioner Kern, what I was getting at was they had five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one fifty-nine, and this is the total salaries, the salaries for the, the county manager's office times one point zero three five percent. That's given the three and a half percent COLA. Should equal to five hundred and forty-seven thousand, uh, six seventy-nine. Then minus the six sixteen that is shown, oh, ninety-five, that gives us a difference of sixty-eight thousand, four fifteen.
Sounds like a head count.
We have eleven, eleven there. We have eleven on the salary schedule. And this is just me spot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, are those the supplemental schedules that you have? Is, are these the most recent ones? Cause.
This is what Jonah had sent out prior.
Okay, so this is the old one that Jonah's.
Four twenty-three, twenty-six.
So Ty, one thing I'd like to request is the complete supplemental schedules for the budget. Because one of the supplemental schedules has the detail by personnel breakdown of payroll.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, and we were given a preliminary, I don't know, maybe a month ago.
Okay. I haven't seen.
But that's.
I, can I get those too?
Yeah, cause this is just total. I have to read the totals of both pages. This bottom, scroll down. Oops, sorry.
The one that says key, that was the last approved.
So that entire.
Yeah, so you had the fifty-five to the.
Five ninety-three, still high.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, the one that, the one that's key was the last approved schedule.
Sure. The one that's key is the last approved. But what I'd like to see is with the three and a half percent COLA, those schedules updated. And the thirteen and a half, I guess, for sheriff office. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Sheriff Baca if he's been able to do an analysis with this thirteen and a half percent. How close is that going to get our hourly rates to, uh, the state and other agencies that we compete with for sheriff's deputies?
Five ninety-three.
I would have to go run those numbers. I know that, um, when we were initially looking at it, it was going to take us fifteen just to get in, uh, up to where these local agencies are making here. I don't even think we'll come close to state at what they're, at their fourteen percent increase.
So I heard that right. You need fifteen percent just to be competitive with locally.
Within the county, yes. But I can go put all that stuff together and email it to you this afternoon.
You would, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, is there anything you want to direct? Or do? Something, I don't know.
I, I, nothing against Ty or anything. I know you haven't had any time really to, to work on this, but I just, um, I, I, I think we're off. Um, based upon the previously approved schedules in that, I think, um, there's several discrepancies.
Which may be a good thing, Mr. Chairman, because if we're identifying issues, I mean, it could be issues on the way they calculated versus the way the state requires us to calculate. Um, but usually when you have two independent people look at things and they come up with differences, that's how you find errors on either side. So, but we need to discover that. But again, my biggest concern is a three million dollar declining balance.
Where are you getting the three million again? I see the two, but.
Well, I'm rounding, I guess. I didn't do the exact calculation.
I got the total operation cost minus the revenue. Is that what you did at the top?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's roughly two.
Okay, two million.
Ten, five.
Two million is still significant.
It is.
Well, I, I'll tell you why I said three million, because you're not counting it. You got to add in the transfer. You're not adding in the transfer.
No.
Because if you look at the beginning balance, it's three point one million. And if you look at the ending balance, it's zero. That alone tells you that we have a three million dollar declining balance.
Three point one.
Three point one, again, I was just rounding to rough numbers.
Mr. Kurt.
I'm still scratching my head. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You asked a question?
Yes.
Good morning, Ty. Thanks for, uh, being here this.
Good morning.
This is Manager Gore. And I know you have a lot of time to, um, really review this as deeply as it needs to be, uh, reviewed. Are you seeing any trends? And can you speak, uh, to what Commissioner Ware was talking about, about the that we're declining and that we're spending more, bringing in?
Yes, sir. No, sir. And, um, as an outside and not knowing the ins and outs and the nuts and bolts, this is my overview, but I really think before we, um, and I understand the concern, and this is why I did it this way, so that we can see the rough numbers. But I wonder, uh, once, I mean, there's eleven hundred line items in the general ledger detail that we need to comb through and maybe I'm missing a grant, a new grant that will bump up the revenues and, uh, take a chunk out of the deficit. These are things we just need to review line by line, uh, the manager's office and I with the department heads to make sure that we've included everything. So, and I understand where they, what they want with the detail. But I think until we actually go line by line with the departments to make sure we've included all their revenue, um, I, I can't speak to the trend yet.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can, just in my quick assessment, just having seen these numbers, you know, given to me just prior to the meeting starting, uh, the difference is the Tiger reimbursement money. So the original budget projected to us showed us without a declining balance. Or maybe it was slightly declining. I can't remember. Uh, but it was a nominal amount and the three million dollars plugged in from Tiger is the difference. So, um, that's, that was my concern about having those Tiger numbers in there. That's a one-time source of revenue. And here we are budgeting a long-term budget based on one-time revenue. You take that, and we don't even know we're going to get that revenue.
Correct.
How long has it been since we've been asking for it?
Four years.
Four years?
At least.
So, I mean, this is, this is, uh, it's actually pretty concerning.
Mr. Kurt.
I, I agree with Commissioner Ware. But, um, there's no way we can include the three million as operating in general fund.
So Commissioners, do you feel this is still a good primary? Do we need to pass this as a preliminary budget moving forward? This is a preliminary and then come back and and make some major adjustments before the final?
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is to give time more time uh, to dig into this. uh, to dig into this budget. Um, I know we all have busy schedules and, you know, but I think we're gonna have to come back on the thirty-first or maybe even the morning of the first to approve a budget. Because um, it's gonna take some time to find three million dollars. I mean, we could spend the whole harmless, there is a million there, that leaves us two million. So maybe DFA would accept a declining balance of a million dollars since we have three in reserve. If we explain to them that that's a one-time decline, which I don't think it is. Um, so I don't think we have to find the full three million dollars, but I guarantee you, my experience with DFA as a percentage of our revenue, we're gonna need to find at least two million, if not two and a half of cuts in this budget.
Mr. Kurt.
Um, two things, thank you, Chairman. Um, I find it hard to, to comprehend that, you know, we've declined that much and I, I think there's some things that probably have not been identified. But one thing I've noted here in the uh, general fund on the salaries and stuff, the road department is not included. And that's an additional half a million.
So additional twelve people? They have twelve in the road department?
Yeah, so that's a minimum of additional half a million.
Well, they have FTE, right? I mean, they have nine people, but don't they have twelve, either eleven or twelve FTEs?
They do. They do. They have nine currently.
So you gotta budget, not based on your actual headcount, but based on your full-time equivalency. So that's a good catch. Vice Chair, I didn't notice that.
Um, I, the way the schedule I received, we had them budgeted in the road fund, in fund two uh, the uh, road fund, which is two oh four, four oh two, and their salaries were eight hundred and eight thousand roughly.
So.
But it's not, I'm totally confused now.
So Commissioners, are you available?
Go from five oh seven. Seventy-three times one point two five.
Mr. Kurt. Would you be available on Friday or Saturday for meeting to allow her more time?
I'll do Saturday afternoon.
But I may have. I could do Saturday morning, but I can't do Saturday is my daughter's birthday, so we have plans. Her fifteenth birthday.
Bring the cake here.
Sorry.
Bring the cake here. Just kidding.
I should be able to make either, either one of those dates work.
Man, I can make Friday work.
I don't think.
Saturday is better for the clerk. I'm in meetings till noon on Saturday morning.
We were two, five.
Eleven. I'm, I'm tied up till eleven. And then I'll have to call in because I'm gonna be in Albuquerque.
Mr. Ware?
Yeah, I have, I have planned Saturday afternoon.
Well, eleven in the morning.
Uh, if I can do it via Zoom, that'll work.
Yes, I think you can. Commissioner Warren's gonna be in via Zoom as well.
Okay, then yes.
Sure we can hold a budget workshop.
But what I'd like to request is that as the schedules get completed, that they get fed to us.
Correct.
I don't wait until they're all done. Um.
So also Commissioners, would you like to see the key schedule out again?
Mr. Kurt. I don't need it again. I have, I have it here, but um, but I do think if, if Ty doesn't have that, she needs it.
Ty, do you have that key schedule?
No, sir.
Yeah, we'll make sure you have that.
Okay.
Uh, Warden Slade, you had your hand up?
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that um, the salary schedule got corrected before we do the final. Um, it still shows that I have thirty-five positions, but I should only have thirty-three. Um, cause I gave up two for my second medical position.
Thank you, Warden.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ware, anything further? So we'll go ahead and hold a budget workshop on Saturday. Was that May thirty-first?
No, Saturday's June first.
So uh, yeah, June first. At eleven AM twenty twenty-four, it's gonna have to be followed by a special meeting to approve immediately following. Any further comment? Yes. Right now, we're just in the preliminary part, so this is, we're just, we're just gonna go with the three and a half percent COLA across the board with the exception of the sheriff's department for the time being. So.
But that, that would be included in the supplemental schedules we've requested.
Just a quick question. Are we gonna, are we just gonna do something like showing our people what they're gonna be made? Like we did so.
Yeah, that's gonna be the salary schedule.
Yeah, that'll be the sal.
They'll look at it before this meeting on Saturday.
They should.
Yes.
They should approve it. Actually, at the bottom of the salary schedule, for each department, there's a place for the department manager to sign off on it. Which is the way it should be done.
And Ty will make sure you have this key schedule that you could update.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. We'll go ahead and close the budget workshop.
We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Colfax County Board of Commissioners to order. Will you please join us in pledge of allegiance?
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. This is a symbol of perfect friendship among United States of America.
All right. At this time, would you please silence and electronics devices? And we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, we probably need to strike item number nineteen from the agenda. Other than that, is there any other corrections? Entertain a motion to amend the agenda to strike number nineteen. Hold on a second, ma'am clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trell.
Yes. Moving on to item number five, approving. Approve public input forum and regular meeting minutes for May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Commissioners on the ICI are the public input forum. I just changed it from Deo to Mr. Sotos. And on. The regular meeting minutes, I requested a change of. On item thirty, just that the word be added is missing. That was regarding the. Conversation on our letterhead. Is there any other changes that you'd like to see in the minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, ma'am clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trell.
Yes. All right, at this time, we do want to thank everyone for coming. We're going to do the recognition of visitors. I'll go ahead and say who's online. I'm not sure who's who's Mike's iPhones.
It's Mike Provine.
Okay. We got Mike Provine, county engineer, county attorney June Rowe, warden Regina Slade, and IT Amadeo Sotos. So so if we could go around here, we're going to be passing the mic around this time. So the it's captured via our webcast. We'll go ahead and start off here with Tim and it'll go back and forth. If you please just introduce yourself for the record.
Tim Martinez, IT.
Amy Brandtis, Road Department.
Todd Tatum, Colfax County, Cute Park.
Sarah Torres, Chief Deputy Clerk.
Leonard Baca, County Sheriff.
Stephen McConnell, McConnell Law Office.
Danielle Avila, Manager's Office.
Taryn Jacomo, Manager's Office.
Craig Seim, Marina Valley Fire Department.
Nate Sanavon, County Fire Marshal.
Tina Colangelo, Manager's Office.
Lindor Barfield, Democratic Party.
Roger Smith, Colfax Gazette.
Kristy Graham, Colfax County Assessor.
Julie Martinez, Manager's Office.
Thank you very much. At this, or we'll go ahead and move forward on to number seven, public comment. We will limit public comment to three minutes. If you have any public comment outside of what's on the agenda, if you just please come forward to the mic and speak clearly to the mic. At this time, is there any public comment? Mr. Tatum?
Just one quick thing. Are y'all going to make the budget? Known to the public, used to pre-COVID, there was always documents that we could follow the budget and go through it ourselves. So I was curious, or is that going to be supplied again?
Yes, sir, when it's when it becomes available to us, we'll put it on the portal as well as have documents available in the commission chambers.
Thank you, sir.
Sir. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number eight, discussion approval of indigent care claim. Is there any indigent care claims?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, moving on to item number nine, discussion action claim of exemption number thirteen, Nancy Brush, Western Center LLC.
Birch.
Birch.
Good morning. Good morning. Today I'm requesting the approval of claim of exemption number thirteen for Nancy Birch, Western Center LLC. This exemption meets all requirements and has been reviewed and approved by county attorney June. Attorney Stephen McConnell is also present for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Ware? I don't have any questions either. And commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, moved in second, ma'am clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trell.
Yes. Moving on to item number ten, this discussion action infrastructure capital improvement plan, ICIP for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six through two thousand and thirty.
Good morning, commissioners. First, I'd like to offer that if anyone would like a paper copy of the latest draft of the ICIP, I do have some with me. If not, I would like to just open this up for discussion. The first six items ranked for year two thousand and twenty-six were decided by yourselves at the last ICIP meeting. And you put it to me and manager Gore to meet, and he did rank and order the remaining projects for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Jacomo, commissioners, Commissioner Kern.
No questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Our item number two, the new main fire station for Moreno Valley Fire District, we have our fire chief here for that district. After further discussions with the chief and with other members of the team. My concern is that that dollar amount is not going to be enough. And I was wondering if the chief could come and tell us what he expects the new fire station to cost based on the inflation that we've seen and also the changes in. The fire marshal requirements for a main station.
Good morning, county manager, commissioners, county clerk. The building in Black Lake Station is going to be a full main station. It's going to be approximately three, four million dollars. We are going to go after loans, so any money that you guys can come up with or comes through different grants, that's free money that we can put towards to bring down our debt. We just paid off our last debt for Valverde Station, which was a ten-year process, made our last payment. So I'm getting full funding from state fire marshal now. So any money, like I said, that you guys can can give us to bring down the cost of finance would be great. We don't have any numbers yet. We don't have the land that we want to build on yet, which we are hopefully will be getting in the next week, signed documents, and then we can go for real numbers. Stand for any questions.
Commissioner Kern.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we at least raise that number to three million from eight hundred thousand.
Good, thank you. Is there any other changes that the commission would like to see? Any input from the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the amending of the Moreno Valley Fire District project total to three million.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved in second, ma'am clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Jacomo.
Thank you, Commission. For our next steps, I will put together a resolution for our ICIP that we will we will be adopting for FY twenty-six through thirty, and we'll present that to you at the end of June for approvals.
Moving on, we'll move on to discussion, item number eleven, discussion action, RFB two thousand and twenty-four dash oh-three, Colfax County, Angel Fire Airport Runway Lighting Rehabilitation. Mr. Provine?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Before us today is the project documents for the runway, excuse me, the airfield lighting upgrades, the replacement up at the airport. The original runway lighting was installed over twenty-three years ago, I believe. And experienced a lot of downtime. I know the county spent some money in the last couple of years getting things repaired. We're fully replacing the runway edge lights and signs with LED fixtures. We also are replacing the rotating beacon and some of the equipment and electrical bulb. We have as an additive alternate replacing the Plazi, which is a pulse light approach slope indicator with a Pappy, which is a precision approach path indicator. With it's a new unit, we have that in an additive alternate. This project is been programmed for funding by FAA. They've got about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant money that should be available. State aviation has written a grant for roughly eighty-two thousand dollars, and this county's match, if the numbers work out, would come from the land match value up at the airport. FAA has their grant season underway. We're proposing to advertise this for bids starting this this weekend, and we would open bids on the twenty-seventh of June with hopefully an award going to the commission on, I believe, July ninth at that meeting. So I stand for any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Provine. Commissioners?
No questions?
Nope, I don't have any questions. Only thing is, I don't know who wrote this up, the request for the bid, but we'll make sure it gets put on new. A new letterhead moving forward. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved in second, ma'am clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes. Moving on to item twelve is discussion action, Colfax County Vector Control Service Agreement between Colfax County and the city of Rattone. Miss Avila?
Good morning, commissioners. These are the vector control service agreements that we normally have during this time. I'm just asking for approval.
With this one on the city of Rattone, we just need to update the current city manager. It stated Scott Berry, the new one is Richard Mestus. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, I can update him.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended with the city manager's.
So moved.
I'll go ahead and second that. No worries, sir.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Ware.
Yes. Moving on to item number thirteen, discussion action, Colfax County Vector Control Service between Colfax County and the Rattone Country Club. Commissioners, any questions? Same as. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved in second, ma'am clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Ware.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to item number thirteen, discussion action, Colfax County Vector Control Service between Colfax County and the Rattone Country Club. Commissioners, any questions? Same as. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved in second, ma'am clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to item number fourteen, discussion action, Colfax County Vector Control Service Agreement between Colfax County and the town of Springer. Commissioners, questions or comments? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Moving on to item number fifteen, discussion action of Colfax County Vector Control Service Agreement between Colfax County and the Village of Simro. This is the same as prior. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Moving on to item number sixteen, discussion action, Colfax County Vector Control Service Agreement between Colfax County and the Village of Maxwell. Commissioners, this is the same as prior. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
One.
Yes.
I need one correction, if I may, sir. Kate Kingston is not the mayor, it's Mark Cruz.
I'm sorry, Mark Cruz?
Yes.
Okay. I'll correct that as well.
Thank you.
We'll all entertain a motion to approve the amended correction. The amended correction.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Moving on to item number seventeen, is discussion action, letters in support of the collation against bigger trucks. This is letters to Benjamin, or Ben, Ben Luhon, Martin Heinrich, and Tressa Ledger Fernandez. Commissioners, this was something that was brought to me, and I just wanted to bring it in front of the commission. The National Association of Counties supports this. They are looking to increase the max weightage and do test runs within the I twenty-five corridor here. I just don't think it's a wise decision, and in the letters of support, you could see that there's other places within the country that these, they're trucks at this capacity could, could be tested at, and they're not going to be over their max capacity. Just as far as I go, you know, we travel the past quite a bit with my family, and this is the last thing we, we need is to have heavier trucks on the road being tested with every, all the construction and everything else we go. Winter conditions and everything else, roads are dangerous enough around here, especially through the mountain passes. Commissioners, is there any questions or thoughts on it?
I, I would agree. I think we see enough damage from the, the weight limits that we have now, and we, we all know that there a lot of them are running overweight as it is, but this is just raising the bar, so. It's not what our routes were designed for, and I think it would be extremely detrimental.
Thank you. Commissioner Ware.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I agree that against this increase, and my concern is with the, to me, it seems like an overstep by the federal government to control regulations within a state. I know what they're talking about on I twenty-five, which is a federal highway, but those vehicles that pull down I twenty-five also pull off of I twenty-five on the local roads. So I think that I agree that this should be a state decision, not a federal decision.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to item number eighteen, is discussion, introduced, introduction of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh four, an ordinance establishing an affordable housing program pursuant to the Colfax County Affordable Housing Plan, defining terms, establishing application requirements and review criteria, and establishing procedures to administer an affordable housing program. Commissioner Ware.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This was actually brought to us from the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority in efforts to develop workforce housing throughout Colfax County. This ordinance is required to avoid anti-donation clauses in the development of workforce housing, and this would allow municipal governments and the county government to contribute to the development of workforce housing specifically. So right now, because of anti-donation, if you, somebody bought a land and they wanted to put in workforce housing, they would have to do all the infrastructure and pay the cost. This would allow municipalities in particular to put in water sewer and, and provide that for the developer as long as the houses being developed were specifically for workforce housing, which has a lot of conditions around qualifying for that. But it does allow, and, and this is even though this the county is not going to be affected by this very much because we don't have much infrastructure beyond roads. This has to be set at the county level in order for municipalities to adopt the same ordinance so that they then can contribute infrastructure to workforce housing projects. So if the county doesn't approve this, then our municipalities won't be allowed to do it either.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. Commissioner Kern.
No questions?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. Would the next step be an open ordinance or road we needed to be brought back for action?
Mr. Chairman, we will need to go through the ordinance process with this. So we will need to have hearings, it will need to be advertised, and then we'll need to have a final vote. This is intended just because the practice, even though it's not a requirement, I don't think statutorily, the practice of the county is to get the commission to say, yes, we want to move forward with an ordinance before we actually start doing the work to generate the ordinance. And that's what the step is, is asking to start the process.
Thank you, and I have no problem with that. Right, thank you. The number, we'll go ahead and move on. Item number nineteen has been struck from the agenda. Moving on to item number twenty, is Manager Stockit, County Manager Gore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looks like Warden Slade is continuing to work toward accreditation in the jail. I want to commend her. I know that's a lot of work and hard effort. And so hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we will have an accredited jail. One of the things I did want to just brief the commission on is on the E nine-one-one. As the commission is aware, the county manager's office contacted Tyler Fawcett with a New Mexico State E nine-one-one regarding some errors that were identified. At that time, there were two thousand errors that were identified by the state. E nine-one-one that needed to be corrected. We began to correct those, and at one of the meetings, I advised the commission that they had found more errors. But those errors were identified as another four thousand. So total errors that have been identified with the E nine-one-one within Colfax County were six thousand. I talked to Tiana today. I am very proud to report that that number is down to forty. So this was a lot of work. I have to commend Tyler Fawcett with New Mexico E nine-one-one, who paid for this project. Once again, as we started identifying some of these address errors within Colfax County, we ended up having municipalities come in and collaborated with the municipalities. So this is truly a county-wide project. That's what it turned into. I was informed by Tiana today that the forty errors should be corrected about mid-June. So once again, this was a project that we took on. It was a very large project. I do wish to thank Tyler Fawcett with the New Mexico State E nine-one-one. There was actually some assistance by by New Mexico colleges and things like that, that donated time to this effort as well. And like I said, I think it's great that by looking into this issue, we identified these mistakes and once again are now working productively and collaboratively with the villages in the county to correct some of their mistakes as well. So hopefully, mid-June, I'll be able to report to this commission that all those errors have been corrected, and we are where we need to be. Vice Chair Kern, I just wish to notify you that last week, we did get envelopes and notices on solid waste did go out. I think that was a very positive letter to send out. It kind of gave our customers and citizens within the county the opportunity to kind of see where we're at in the scheme of things, and Jonathan Arthur has, as he presented to the commission at the last meeting, is on it. I don't think we could have gotten a better contractor to take on that, that job. Checked with Julie, we're not getting any complaints on solid waste issues. And I think once again, the letter will advise citizens that if they need to make payments, how to do so. And that letter that went out will also kind of gives them information on where Jonathan is going to be and basically recouping some of those old dumpsters, reclaiming them, repairing them, painting them, and once again, the color that he chose was red, which seems to go pretty, pretty well with things. And so anyway, that letter has went out and citizens have been notified. Vector Control, County Fire Marshal, can you come up to the podium? I know that we have had some applicants. And County Fire Marshal, if you can just advise the board kind of where we're at hiring somebody.
Just where we're at, as I said, we have the one applicant who is ready to go. It is in Susan's office right now. She's making sure that everything is going to be done according to the contract, and then from there, getting some classes lined up so that the new vector control person and myself can take the class, get the certifications to get started on doing the work. My part in the process is just going to be to assist the new person that we've put on board in case they need time off or just need help getting this larger area covered, so that would at least be a couple of us out there running and keeping up with the schedule.
Commissioners, questions? Thank you.
The last thing that I have, once again, Mike Provine, myself, Allison Brooks with FAA, and Scott did work on the ICIP for the airport. I did invite Taryn to come in. And I kind of introduced her to the airport. Those two have always kind of been kind of separate, but I think right now that we have a grant writer. And with her talents and ability, it'd be good to have her kind of work with us on the airport ICIP going forward. Once again, I think we chose and prioritized things that really needed to be fixed in that airport. One thing I did want to just advise this commission, I think it's very important, is the question was asked to Allison Brooks how hard it would be if we wanted to transfer the airport to the Village of Angel Fire. And I was quite delighted to hear Allison replied that it shouldn't be that difficult of a process. And that obviously the county has grants and stuff like that. We'd still have to stand behind the grants and still work. But anyway, as far as Allison was concerned, there shouldn't be too difficult of a process transferring that, that airport. So I thought that was good news. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners, Commissioner Kern.
One question, thank you, Manager Gore. With so many address corrections with E nine-one-one, what is going to be the process of notifying landowners of those properties that have been corrected, what their new address is?
That's a good question. As far as my understanding, has this process has been going on, a lot of those new addresses that have been corrected, the, the landowner, loan, landowners have already been notified, but I can verify that with Tiana and with the state.
Well, I just was going to think, can I get a copy of those corrections so we can have an assessor?
Absolutely.
You can help send them to us, what we have on this. That would be nice.
Are there any other questions, Commission?
Commissioner Ware.
Yes, Mr. Manager. Can you give us an update on the status of a new road laborer for Moreno Valley? Have we made any progress there? Or I'm not sure if laborer is the right term, whatever their CDL driver, whoever grades the roads.
Thank you for clarifying, sir.
Okay, sorry.
We did hire a new driver. And that individual has a lot of experience in driving trucks. And we had specifically targeted different cities, even in Mora and things like that. I'd sit down and talk with Glenn. Because of the cost of living being so high in Angel Fire and that being a resort community, we thought if we could maybe work to get somebody that lived closer and allow them to, to drive into the area and stuff like that to do roadwork and especially plowing in the winter. And the individual that we hired is a resident of Simro. So I think that worked out fairly well.
Also, Mr. Manager, I mean, we can talk about this afterwards, but there were some fifteen mile per hour signs that were purchased last year, and because of the departure of our road person in the valley, my understanding was they were delayed in being put up, and I just, now that we have a new person up there, I'd really like to get those fifteen mile per hour signs up, especially before the Fourth of July that are in the Black Lake area. They've been requested. We did do the ones on Anate Road last summer, so those residents are thankful, but there were some other signs promised in the MLK area that did not get put up, and I'd just like to see that prioritized.
Absolutely. I think that's a good thing to prioritize, and that actually reminded me, we did order signs for public safety for the Chicoria Creek Low Water Crossing. And those signs have been put up, and basically what it does is just warns people that if there's water crossing, the crossing, please do not proceed forward. So I think from a liability standpoint and an effort to safeguard our citizens, that was important. We do have signs, and I will work with the road superintendent to see when we can get those post haste installed, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, further, Commissioner Ware.
One other question, if I may, sir. What, what is the status of filling the financial specialist position? Where are we at with that?
We are in the process of getting applications right now. Right now, the focus that we have is working with Ty. Trying to get a good understanding of our budget, and I think I want to thank the commission. I think even setting a meeting on Saturday, I know nobody likes to do that, but I appreciate the commission engaging and working towards that end. I think it's important for the commission, and I agree with Commissioner Ware that sometimes it's a good thing to have another set of eyes review the budget. And hopefully Tia can work to give us a little bit more information on the next meeting. And because it is important that we see where the budget actually is and see trends. So after we complete this process, we'll start focusing on actually replacing the position. Hope that answers your question.
Since, since we're talking about that anyway, I'll go ahead. It's my understanding that the budget is due Friday. Meeting on Saturday is not going to make the timeline.
My calendar.
My calendar. So, and where did you get that it was due on Friday?
Well, that's the end of the month. It's not a holiday. Why would it not be?
So statutorily, the budget's due on June first. I looked it up.
What is it due?
Actually talked to DFA. No, because the state statute says the budget's due on June first.
So you got till midnight on the first?
I have till midnight on the first. I mean, I went and, and checked because, um, of course I'm working on the budget for the Village of Angel Fire. And I thought that it wasn't going to be due until the third. And so we contacted DFA and we were instructed by DFA that the statute calls for it due on June first. And so we haven't, we were told that, you know, it, let's do it midnight on June first. I mean, we can check that if you want to be sure, but, um, wouldn't hurt, you know, have somebody call DFA, make sure counties, I think they are, but counties have the same rules as municipalities, but.
Well, I think, I do think we need to be sure. I'm not questioning their information, but I, I do believe we need to be sure. Um, and if the county manager can have somebody, um, check that. Immediately, so.
Yeah, I would say call our DFA person and ask them specifically. That's what I did.
Certainly do that, and there's nothing wrong with double checking.
County Attorney?
Uh, yes, uh, Chairman, uh, Triyo, if I may, uh, about that. Sorry about that, sir. Under section six dash six dash two, uh, it requires that, uh, you know, the local, uh, you know, the DFA need to examine. The proposed budget, uh, you know, to, uh, I think, uh, require each local public body, including the county, to furnish and file with the division. On or before June first of each year, a proposed budget for the next fiscal year. So, it was stated in the six dash, uh, six dash six dash two, uh, subsection A.
So before or on?
Yeah, on, on or before June first.
I mean, if we want to turn it in on Friday, uh, I don't have any objection to that. I was just trying to give, uh, Ty as much time as possible. Um, there's, well, there's a lot of work to do.
Well, there's a tremendous amount of work to do. I'm just saying, because of that, we would have to move our meeting to Friday instead of Saturday.
Yeah, but, uh, I think it's June first.
Okay.
So, how about we just, uh, just to be safe, if for some reason, if it's, if we have to do it before, would Friday at five-thirty work?
I'll be on, by Zoom, I can attend.
Yeah, me and myself by Zoom.
So just in case, we'll have the, the county manager's office double check. We'll get back to us.
Schedule it Friday.
Well, it'll, it'll give her extra.
And Mister Chairman, I mean, I, I, I think it might be a good idea to have another budget hearing. But statutorily, we're only required to have two. So if we just wanted to meet and approve the budget. Um, I mean, we could actually meet, discuss the budget and in the same meeting approve it. We don't have to have another hearing.
Commissioner Kern? That's fine. Thank you. All right, we will move on to item number twenty-one, uh, Commissioner Stockit. Commissioner Kern? No report. Commissioner Ware?
Um, yes, Mister Chairman, thank you. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to share, um, I've been researching on the, uh, fire station at the airport. And we've been, we had Mister Provine, uh, do some research for us to find lots. That we could, uh, request the resort either sell or donate to us. Uh, outside of the airport because the holdup on the fire station at the airport is getting FAA approval. To put a fire station on property that effectively the, um, FAA owns because of our agreement with them. For us to transfer land instead of our matches on federal grants. Uh, which the FAA now owns, I don't know the exact percentage, but a large percentage of the actual land at the airport because we've been doing this for, several decades. So, um, the challenge is if we go outside the airport and then we, create egress into the airport, it kicks off a whole new review process by the FAA. Because the FAA has to approve for security reasons, the, uh, egress to any airport. And that, my understanding is that process to get them to approve that, can take months if not a year. Uh, so, um, it looks like to me that it, it no longer makes sense to look to get property donated outside the airport. If we want a fire station, uh, and the fire station where we want to place it is on land that is currently being held by the FAA. Uh, my recommendation is that we look at simply, uh, acquiring that land back from the FAA, which means, paying off the, a match that's attributable to that, and I believe that match and, and Commissioner Kern may know better, but I think it's only about three or four thousand dollars in acres all we're getting for that land. Um, and if we could work with the FAA to buy that acre back and we could put the, fire station where we want, I, hopefully that would take less time than trying to get the FAA to approve a new, egress to the airport. Um, so I just want to make that recommendation that we look at. Uh, talk with and, and talk to Allison Brooks is my recommendation, uh, Mister Manager. And see if they're, uh, find out from the, um, from Nate, um, where they, would be the best place to put a fire station regardless of who owns the property. And then talk to Allison Brooks about us buying that lot back or paying off the FAA, whatever we got to do to allow them, to get them to allow us to build there. And then go ahead and build in that location. Um, it looks like the best course of action, uh, that we could take. Um, secondly, on, on solid waste, I will tell you that I, I monitored this weekend, at least, uh, Moreno Valley. And, uh, things are really look good. I mean, I saw almost no trash on the ground in either places I went. I will say I did see some in Black Lake that was up against that fence, not, not a mo- a lot, but two or three pieces. That had blown up against that fence, which indicates to me that the fence is, is working. And, um, uh, the neighbor next door, which was the main complainant of that location. Is, uh, uh, has wrote us a very positive letter. So I think that, uh, things are looking good. I don't know if, uh, the chief, who actually operates out of that, uh, site has any experience, since you're probably there every day. I, I just drove by a couple of times.
You know, I, I, I'd say that. This weekend was probably the best weekend I've seen a trash in twenty years I've lived up there. Uh, Arthur has done great, um, that second fill-off, uh, which begins with. We still have trash.
Oh, you brought it already?
But, uh, no, it was actually nice. Uh, and it's the first time that I wasn't getting.
Thank you. So, good, kudos to everybody, John Arthur and our staff. Um, I know it was very painful getting to where we are now, but it was well worth it, it looks like, uh, so far. So I'm very appreciative. Of that. Um, and Mister Chairman, that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Uh, County Manager, we are, can you remind me of the date, if you know by chance when the Raton Cleanup Day is and, and how the county is kind of participating in that?
Absolutely, Mister Chairman. That date is June first, and the county has, um, actually did a press release, uh, which I shared with the, uh, commission, uh, that we are working, uh, with and in collaboration with the city of Raton. And, uh, we are putting out, um, three, um, roll-offs. Um, one will be out on, um, um, one's up right off seventy-two. I think it's, um, Metal Art. And the other one is going to be at the Event Center, and then the other one is going to be, um, right across from the Oasis on a lot. We've worked with the people there, and all that information, uh, was forwarded to local press. Um, last week.
Thank you. Um, I also wanted to let, shh, let the commission know we received a, uh, a thank you from Representative Sanchez, just a, an acknowledgement. Of the letter and, uh, Senator Campos, he sent a really nice, nice email and just thanked, uh, that he was just deeply humbled and honored to receive the letter of appreciation from us. Uh, I will forward this to, to the county manager and he could get it to, to everyone. Uh, I also, this last meet last week, that with Triatic to, I guess, better understand their, their system and, and how they could implement. And, uh, this brought up, due to our last conversation with, comparing Triatic to Tyler, and it just, it's from my understanding, there's just a lot of systems that the county is not using that Triatic does have available. That would make things seem to be run a little bit smoother. Uh, this Thursday, uh, represent- Representative Fernandez from the federal delegation will be here at Attorney School. At two o'clock, uh, to present them with, uh, a check for the three million dollars for the film school. Uh, Commissioner Ware, I don't know if you were going to be able to attend.
Um, I am gonna try.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't mean my, myself and Commissioner Kern will not be able to attend. Uh, and for that, I will be remotely on our next meeting. My wife is expecting, so I will be out. I don't think I'll be a new father by then, but we'll see. Uh, so Commissioner Kern, if you would, please, just to run the meeting and do all that stuff. Uh, I also wanted to check with my fellow commissioners and see if any of them were going to be attending the New Mexico, County's annual conference in Las Vegas this year. It's June seventeenth through the twentieth. I will not be in attendance.
I will be there.
You will? Commissioner Ware?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And then that is, that is it. So currently for the budget workshop, it still sits at Saturday, ten AM or, yeah, our special meeting is Saturday at ten, at eleven AM. Missures, is there anything further? Anything further from the public? Say nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mister Kern? Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Yes.